Good evening, welcome to the special meeting of the Town Council Tuesday, Thursday, October 14th. It's five o'clock. A roll call, please.
Councilmembers Dennison.
Here.
Drose.
Here.
Lombardo.
Here.
Schooler.
Here.
And Mayor Abel.
Here. All right, please join us. Our council member, Dr. Lombardo, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand, place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Need a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
And all second? Motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Dennison.
Yes.
Drose.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Abel.
Yes. We'll move to our department reports. Prop 68 Aquatics and Recreation Center.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's an exciting evening for us this evening. It's a little bit different, you know, as we've been going through it, and you'll hear more about this this evening, but from the staff's perspective, we've been dealing with this day in and day out for pretty regularly for about the last three months and then beyond that for the last three years. So, but I think from the public's perspective, it's an exciting evening, this evening getting final direction from the Town Council as we move forward. I do want to start by reading what I put in the staff report because I think it captures in a meeting that I had not that long ago with a resident here in town, and the question came up as to maybe not as familiar with everything that the town is doing, and they had heard about the project, and the question was, why are you guys building a pool? And can you even, can you even think that that's something that the residents want? So it dawned on to me that maybe for some of the new people, and that's part of the presentation this evening, for those that haven't been ingrained in this project for a number of years, this will give them some background and some understanding of what we're doing and why we're doing it. But let me just read this. "The Yucca Valley Aquatics and Recreation Project represents an exciting and once-in-a-generation opportunity to provide an amazing facility for this community, made possible through an allocated grant in the State of California's Parks and Water Bond Act of 2018," here, Prop 68. "This project will give unique access to a recreational facility that will serve all residents and visitors of the town, including many of the underserved seniors and youth in this community. Yucca Valley believes that health and wellness should not be limited to individuals with resources, and this project helps remove such economic barriers. In a town where individual swimming pools are the exception, and gymnasium and fitness facilities are limited to schools, churches, private memberships, this project expands access to year-round swimming, swimming lessons, water exercise, therapy, adult and youth sports leagues, senior fitness programming, and many, many other health and wellness opportunities for all residents in the town." So hopefully that captures a little bit about why we're doing this, and for some of those that are newer to the community, they may not realize that Yucca Valley largely remains an underserved community. We identified this not only with our Prop 68 allocated grant, but also our Prop 68 competitive grants, which we'll talk about at the end of the presentation. In that process, you identify what the demographics look like in your community, and Yucca Valley is an underserved community, well below median income. A lot of our residents are on public assistance, and low mod income areas expand across much of Yucca Valley. So projects like this would never be attainable for many of the individuals at their own homes or even having some of those amenities, and so this public project really becomes that bridge for many in the community. So with that, I'd like to move into the presentation, and let me see where our clicker is. Counsel, I'll leave it at your discretion if, in the, as we go through the presentation. It's a good number of slides, so it's going to take us about a half hour to go through it. If there are pressing questions that you have during the presentation, just interrupt us, it's not a problem, okay? It's going to be a team effort this evening. Wanted to highlight the town's project team, and I put this on here for the very specific reason of just ensuring that the council and the community know that from the town's perspective, we viewed this project and the recommendation before you this evening as a multi-department recommendation. So we have everyone, every department represented. So I'm just going to read these names off, and I want the folks to raise their hand just so you know who is working with us on this from the project team. So Armando, representing Public Works. Clayton with Aquatics. Sue with Community Services. Jerry with Facilities. Rachel for Finance and Admin. Rusty, representing Parks. Shane, obviously, for Community Development. Deborah, Human Resources and Risk Management. And Susanna Straw, helping out with Engineering. So I think everyone is here this evening, so I appreciate the team coming together. As an extension of staff, the council will remember that you authorized a project management team to assist us, and that is Dallin and one of their consultants coming. So I'm just going to ask Stephanie to introduce your team this evening.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Fujimura. I'm principal in charge for this project, and working with you for the last couple of months have been Gregor Markle and Erica DeGocchio as your project manager.
Thanks, Stephanie. Appreciate that. So what we wanted to do this evening and just kind of run through this in two different parts, we're going to briefly, I'm going to try and make this briefly, go through the project history since it's been about a year since we've been in some of the detail on this project, and then we're going to spend the second half of the presentation talking about what we've done over the last three months coming to the recommendation before you this evening. It started out in 2008, actually with councilmember Schooler was still on staff here with the development of a comprehensive parks master plan. That was updated 10 years later in 2018 and really established the bedrock recommendations that are included in much of the outreach that was done in identifying what recreational assets the community wanted. And through that process, when the opportunity came through the diligent work of Assembly Member Mays to identify some potential capital funds and have that language written into Prop 68, we were ready and willing to be able to take advantage of that, and you'll see that in the language here in a minute. After that, started out with significant community outreach, and again, we highlight community outreach because not only was it done specific for this project, but it built on what was already done in the development of the Parks Master Plan both in 2008 and Council thought it was important to have a specific group of stakeholders that represented a broad cross-section of the community, and they did that through the establishment of the Community Advisory Group. Community Advisory Group worked with town staff and the community for the better part of a year, identifying again what some of that outreach was, what they thought might be most advantageous for this project. Town staff went on some rec camp site tours, which we'll talk about later, and then ultimately Town Council, through recommendations of the Community Advisory Group, as well as authorizing the environmental review, came up with a conceptual design and wanted to have some validation of that, refinement of that as we moved forward. So we'll talk about how that works as well. This is important, this is the quote from the actual language that allocated the grant of 20 million, it's actually 22, but then state needed their admin side, so it worked out to about $20 million for this project of allocated grant funds through Prop 68, with the purpose being that it'll assist in achieving active recreational projects, including aquatic and fitness centers. For those of you that know the background of Assembly Member Mays, you'll understand that language in there and why it's in there. And so that's important because as we went through the decision-making process that comes to the recommendation that's before you this evening, we went back to really what is it that this facility is intended to do and what is the primary purpose of As we indicated, the Community Advisory Group came up with a number of guiding principles that the Town Council ascribed to, talking about grant conditions, programming needs, accessibility, circulation, and that was kind of their guiding principles in establishing their recommendation. Some of these pictures you've seen before, but just demonstrates the project history that the town did, both with our internal efforts as well as engaging LPA to assist us with that effort. Number of workshops, interviews with stakeholders, commissions, PRCC, Planning Commission, a lot of outreach. Ultimately, came up with these programming goals, both on the aquatic side and the recreation side, and very much in line with what was already known to the staff and the town through its Parks Master Planning efforts. Through that process with LPA, Council and the Community Advisory Group looked at a number of sample facilities and ultimately identified sample number seven there at the end that had both a gymnasium, core facilities, an indoor and auditorium, as well as an outdoor pool as the ideal if budget were no barrier. LPA, Community Advisory Group, also looked at site selection, a number of different sites throughout town, including Brem, Brem Park, both the north and south side, Community Center Park, Essig, Sunny Slope, and a couple of other sites that were included. Through that process, they scored them with the lowest score being the ideal site. That ultimately ended up being the Brem Park North Site with the Brem Park South Site and the Community Center close behind. Again, this was at the Community Advisory Group level. Through that process, the Community Advisory Group came up with a recommendation that largely was accepted by the Town Council, and that was, again, this facility at that location there that represents Brem Park on the north site. The meeting of March 31st, 2020, the Town Council agreed with that with a couple of Ideally, the council wanted to look at both sites, let me go back, oh, you'll see it on the next slide, both sites for Brem One and Brem Two for environmental purposes, to look at the impacts, potential impacts, and then also identified the Boys and Girls Club facility as another facility for consideration. And then clarified that the establishment of cost recovery targets for this facility was identified at a minimum of 50%. That's important, and you'll see that as the recommendation is formed up later. So through that process, the Town Council identified this general graphic that's representative of the Brem Park South Site with number 12 there. Just to the bottom of that is the existing Boys and Girls Club. The gym would be built, or to the side of that, an indoor and auditorium is number five, a splash pad is number six. The outdoor pool was identified as a future phase, and the secondary gym was also identified as a future phase. So that was conceptually what the Town Council had moved forward in June of 2020. So for sequel purposes, both the north site and the south site were identified, looked at, and examined, and ultimately, the Town Council adopted resolution, I believe it's 2119, excuse me, and finds that the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration is the appropriate document for disclosing the minor changes and additions to the project associated with adding the aquatics and rec project to the project site and assessing the potential environmental impacts, and that none of the conditions under State Sequel Guidelines 15162 requiring the need for further supplemental or subsequent environmental review have occurred. So essentially, sequel was cleared at that point. I wanted to highlight the seriousness with which staff took to ensure that we had an understanding of what facilities might be like, what other facilities are out there, and California is probably not the best place for an auditoriums and other things of recreational assets. Really kind of goes from community to community, there's a big difference, but there was an opportunity for the staff to take a look at some of the facilities in Colorado, and I didn't join them on that trip, but Sue and Shane, Rusty, and Clayton were all able to go, and so I'm going to have Sue just talk a little bit about their experience there. I'll run through the couple of slides as she does that.
Sure. Thank you, Curtis. We, when we started to embark on doing our research about recreation centers and engaging with other recreation professionals, we had gone out on a tour to Lake Havasu City of their auditorium and rec center, and then also our interactions when we started the feasibility study. We had heard mention of this rec camp opportunity, and after researching it, our deputy town manager Shane Stickell, park supervisor Rusty Scott, aquatics manager Clayton Rerden, and I attended the camp in 2019. The camp is presented by BRS Architecture of Denver, Colorado, who specializes in the design and planning of community recreation. It's a tour-based educational experience focusing on high-performing rec center design and management for recreation professionals. Participants in the camp are able to tour a wide range of community recreation facilities and get insight from the people who work and play in there, in them. We learned about trends in recreation centers from experts in the field and toured nine centers in the Denver area with rec camp counselors who were available to answer detailed questions along the way. An enrollment is limited to 40 campers, and they're grouped together in groups of eight or nine people with two counselors to maximize the effectiveness of the camp. It's a great way to get answers and advice in a very consolidated fashion. We had access to experts, could ask them question about recreation facilities, and were able to tap the knowledge not only of the counselors, but of the peers that were accompanying us, who were from throughout the nation. The counselors reviewed trends and best practices and covered what's up and coming in community recreation. They shared lessons learned and best practices for facility operations and maintenance. The itinerary was a multi-day schedule that included, you know, we hit the ground running. It was a facility operations workshop. Right when we arrived, we had two days of facility tours, we had a facility design workshop at the end, and it was just so beneficial to not only tour so many facilities that, of so many different styles, but to ask questions and interact with our fellow campers and the counselors along the way. So to us, it was just a perfect fire hose educational experience to lead into this project, and we were able to tour, you know, large and small facilities and ask the staff there, you know, we had Q and A sessions with the staff, actually working at these facilities, asking them, you know, now that they're in it, the pros and cons, what works great, what do you wish was different? Just a great consolidated, you know, few days of just getting knowledgeable about different styles of rec facilities and different approaches. So it was, it was very, very, very valuable to us when we launched this project.
Thank you, Sue, for that, and if you're interested in seeing any of these other layouts, we were happy to share some of these, some of the information with you. So in June of this year, the Town Council again authorized us to engage a project management team to help us. I think staff quickly realized that building something of this magnitude and of this cost is not something that we do every day, it's not our wheelhouse, and we definitely wanted to focus on not necessarily building it fast, but building it right, and that was really our paramount goal. And so Town Council authorized Dallin to come in and assist us with that. Again, not doing all of the work independently, but really shepherding the process and helping staff understand from a technically expert viewpoint how to address some of the questions, how to address some of the issues that may come up, and guide us to that recommendation process that we have this evening, and of course, that's only one of their parts of their scope, which they'll talk about in a minute. But then to move that through, through the RFP process and ultimately through the design process as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Dallin team to come up and kind of walk us through the next part of this presentation.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having us here. I don't know if you can hear me, or, is that better? Sounds better. All right. Thank you very much for having us here. We're thrilled to be a part of this team. This has been an exciting process, and we've had a lot of fun going through the, going through the motions with the group and getting to where we are. I'm Gregor Markle, I'm a senior principal with Dallin, and I'm one of your project managers for this project. One of the core things that we were brought on to do was to verify and validate what you're looking at in terms of your program. You had gone through an extensive process to get to where you are at this point, and really one of the key focuses for us as we started through this process as your project manager is to make sure that we, you guys had walked the process correctly, test what you've done, what were the recommendations, where you had landed, and really take a hard look at some of the things that you've got. That mic's open, do you want me to shut it off?
No, maybe just bring your mic closer, yeah, that'd be very helpful.
Yeah, we'll turn it down, but have it really close to your mouth, because we do have people online, so we want to make sure they can hear the presentation.
So what we started to do is look at programming for the project itself and make sure that everything that you guys were trying to capture, everything that was, is something that you wanted to deliver to the community was represented in the project, was something that was captured properly, and that it was something that we could deliver and execute on. We looked at the recreation program, you know, indoor recs in terms of all the different things that you could do, same thing with the aquatics program for the inside, and then looked at the program for the outdoor aquatics as well. Going to the inside program for recreation, just the different component, you know, components of a gym, what can you provide in there? And as we looked at this, understanding, as Curtis mentioned earlier, you want to recapture revenue as best you can, making sure that these spaces and facilities could perform as many functions and as many multipurpose functions as possible so that you had greater opportunity for revenue capture as you did different things. That, you know, we don't want to build a facility that limits you and doesn't allow you to host different events that are potential revenue generating streams for the town. Looking at just different, again, those different options, you end up with a facility that'll look similar to that image on the left there. We did the same thing with the indoor aquatics and took a really hard look at that, tried to understand everything that you're trying to provide from an aquatic standpoint, and where the initial program had landed, especially in terms of some of the different rec features that really wanted to be captured within the indoor aquatic pool. We came to realize that two lanes of lap swim was not really sufficient for what you were looking at, was not going to allow you to capture a lot of learning, recapture money in terms of swim lessons, things like that, because it was a fairly small body of water. Doing a little bit of the study work, we figured out that we really needed to have at least a minimum of four-lane pool, and as we started to talk about the different aquatics components, we came to discover that having a six-lane pool actually had more benefit to it. Part of that is we looked at this in combination with the outdoor aquatics piece of the project and realized that having an outdoor aquatics component would actually create a demand for more staff, more site area, and a lot of other issues that, you know, along with a lot of other operating costs, that would make it difficult to bring that to the facility. And by expanding the indoor aquatics component to six lanes, you actually capture almost all of the elements of that outdoor aquatics piece with this indoor piece. Then you have your, it greatly expands your rec area within your indoor area and really does everything you need it to do. And you kind of see in the purple that we've started to highlight these areas and these elements by just expanding this indoor piece, it really allows you to consolidate all of that into a single body of water and achieve everything that the rec staff is trying to provide, that aquatics is trying to provide to the community in a pool. Then what we wanted to do was look at, how do we support this facility? And really start looking at all of the different elements of it, you know, the locker rooms, the administration areas, support space for multipurpose that are connected to the pool, for things like birthday parties, women's birthday parties and other events, things like that, that you can then capture as a part of this. Again, the eye on these things is, what can we do to consolidate, minimize overhead, and create revenue generating opportunities for the town? And coming to, coming to this type of layout as kind of the core element of that primary aquatics. So I'm going to turn it over to Erica, who's going to talk to you about sites.
Good evening, everyone. So once we got the program dialed down, the biggest question became, where should the program be located to be the most effective, and will it even fit on a site? The first option we looked at actually incorporated the Boys and Girls Club, because it's to utilize that South Brem Park site in the most efficient layout, we'd have to consolidate the program and therefore rebuild. This option wound up being not favorable, too costly, the initial program didn't match up with the goals of this recreation and aquatic center. So where that left us then is a final program concept that was the core example of the goals of the project itself, as well as all of the program refinement. You can see there, there's still some sketching along the way as we really work to think about the adjacencies and the size of this program. So where should it be? We looked at the north and the south site, north being a little bit larger and also being a bit out of the flood plain. Compared to the south site, which as we determined, leaving the Boys and Girls Club intact, the building would have to be sited further south, deeper into the flood plain that you see there. Pros of the north site, we looked at it as a bigger site. It had existing site control on the larger boundary, but the biggest benefit of the north site is that synergy that it has with the master plan, as well as your town events that are already occurring on the soccer field. Some initial massing made it easy to see that the site development costs would be a lot less on the north site. But again, doing the same rigor on the south site, what could be the pros of that? It had a high street presence, and again, we could set back the impact to the Boys and Girls Club, but with the flood impact on the south side, it would cause a great retaining wall, which actually created a detriment to the approachability of a future development. So with that, our final site selection was the north site.
Erica, excuse me, can you go back to that site just to make sure that the public and the council's oriented right there? So that top one is, if you're on Lord Field and you're looking to the west, that elevation change is about 10 feet higher than the playing surface on Lord Field, and then that same site there would be looking to the south, that's the bottom one, kind of, I guess, looking southeast on Palm, and so you could see the entrance there would be by the Boys and Girls Club and would rise up as you go up to the elevation of the entry, which would either be some limited access from the front or likely some kind of stair, stair access to the facility.
Right, so we looked at two ways. One, that the vehicular access would take you up to the flat graded building site, but as Curtis is saying, then that creates a big retaining wall, or you have another pedestrian access, which could be a site elevator or some other accessible means of entry without having to raise all of the parking there. So, and again, this is just rough studies to see really what that impact would be even early in this project process. So again, taking us to our final site selection of the north site, and this is the final programming you're seeing here that we'll divulge later, but going basically to meet all the parameters of the project goals. So with that, we looked at every configuration just to vet out all the program possibilities. There were some program elements along the way that wound up not being beneficial to the overall facility's goals. So with that, we looked at the same program elements as both an option A and an option B on both the north and the south sites to make sure they were fitting, which again, put us back to our final program concept here that reinforced that the north site is the most efficient and successful layout for this new facility. With that, I'll take it back to Curtis to go into the cost summaries here.
One of the, you can, yeah, I guess I'll take that, you guys won't need it anymore. Part of the interesting exercise that we did over the last three months since Dallin came on was really, again, a validation and a review and a validation of some of the information that was done in our initial conceptual layout and design with, work with LPA and with the community, and some of the comments that we heard during that And some of the comments that we heard during that phase was, oh, we just can't believe how expensive this is going to be. Are these costs reasonable? They don't seem right. Other questions at any time that you're talking about a multimillion-dollar facility are inevitably going to come up, and rightfully so, absolutely. So what we wanted to do is to make sure that we had assurance of another set of eyes taking a look at what was done. Does it make sense? Does it make sense in the current building environment? And at the end of the day, what you're going to see is it absolutely did make sense. It's at a little bit higher level, and what we've done since then is a little bit more, like, kind of peeling back what those components are. But at the end of the day, the overall amounts were pretty doggone close, and you'll see that this evening. So this was one of the slides that you had seen from LPA and their estimate of what that cost would be for construction costs for a gym and a pool there at 22 and 1/2 Again, as we've gone through and identified some of the different elements that are included and that are not included, both in the previous budget and in the current budget. And what you'll end up seeing here is both a breakdown of Phase 1 and Phase 2 areas. And we're going to talk about options as they relate to Phase. So let me clarify what that is. Phase 1 includes, for the purposes moving forward here, the natatorium and the core support facilities. That would include some multi-use space as well as administrative space. Phase 2 really is limited to the gymnasium, gymnasium storage. So Phase 1, about 26,000 square feet. Phase 2, around 10,000 square feet. Total amount, about 37,000 square foot facility. Interestingly, you'll see on the second line there for your cost summary, using current costs, estimates, general construction for Phase 1 at 15.8 million, Phase 2 about 6.3 for a total of 21.1 million. Of course, you have other costs that are associated with that, and in today's environment, obviously, there's a lot of unknowns with whether it's labor, whether it's supply, et cetera. So that contingency amount of 15% construction, 10% others, a pretty big ticket item in the overall project budget of 30 million. So you'll recollect that your Prop 68 allocated grant is approximately 20 million, so you have about a $10 million gap, and that gives you a couple of different options moving forward. We want to talk about whether or not the town has the ability to fund the entire project. And this is not a proposed budget, rather, it's just a demonstration of the supplemental resources that the town has, kind of as the project's laid out. So I'm going to walk you through these briefly. Top left is your allocated grant. It's broken down into two phases, kind of some of the soft costs associated with the project as well as the construction. So just under 20 million, and that is money that you have already allocated to this project. Supplemental resources available for the town, you can use, depending on what type of work is going on, you may be able to use development impact fees, for example, on drainage, on Palm Avenue, et cetera. You have capital projects reserves that are unallocated, and it's obviously at the discretion of the council. General fund reserves, town has been very frugal over the last number of years and have built a sizable reserve. This is not your entire reserve. This only represents maybe about half of your undesignated reserve right now, that $5 million figure. And then lastly, you have additional funds that have come in for COVID-related impacts and infrastructure related to the American Recovery Act. That total budget is about 5.2 million, so we've only allocated here as an example about 2/3 of that. What we did not include in any of those supplemental funds is debt service capacity. You obviously have zero debt right now. This town has zero debt. You do have the ability to carry debt if you wish. And even if the desire was to pay for it all upfront, at the end of the day, you know, there may be benefits to having debt service, particularly in a rising interest rate environment. And then lastly, and we'll talk about this in a minute, is the Prop 68 competitive grant application that is still undecided at this point. Those funds are not included in your supplemental available resources. So all total, there you have 20 in allocated, at least 12, 12 and 1/2 in supplemental revenues available to the town if the town council desires to move forward with the entire project. So it comes to the recommended options that are before you this evening. The recommended option from your entire team this evening is to complete the entire project, not phase it. This would be, and we'll talk about the reasons shortly, but this would be including the natatorium and the gym, core support facilities as well. That would require a total project budget estimated right now at just over 30 million. Gives you an idea of how that would look sited on the Brem Park North property. Alternatively, if the council had no desire to go beyond the grant resources, then you would likely have to phase the project. Phase 1 would be the natatorium. That's the number one element that was requested both by the town council as well as the community. And a number of reasons why we don't think that's the best approach, but definitely if that was something that the council wanted to do to stay in line with the grant resources, that would be possible. And there could be ways that you could prep the site for including that secondary element at a later time. We just understand that if phasing is done, that amount that you might be deferring now likely would increase in future, not only because of inflationary factors, but also because of additional construction-related costs, whether it's going out for an RFP later again, mobilization, all of those other types of construction costs you're not able to leverage if you do have a phased approach. That's what that might look like as a phased approach. So our recommendation, again, is to complete the entire facility. It's as close to what the Community Advisory Group identified. Again, probably the most significant piece that's missing from the Community Advisory Group is the outdoor pool. That's not included here as a phase. Again, allows the greatest operational revenue and most activities from both wet side and dry side programming, recognizes construction efficiencies. You get the most people coming through the facility, both on the gym side as well as the natatorium side. Takes advantage of construction all at one time, meets our goal of ensuring that staff can be consolidated into one facility for programming efficiencies. And then lastly, the town council has the financial flexibility to do either Option 1 or Option 2. Lastly, wanted to identify that the town has a Prop 68 competitive grant application still outstanding. We expect that decisions on this Prop 68 plan will be announced in fall of this year. Parks has not indicated when that's going to occur, so it could be any time. That application included a number of improvements in this master plan that you can see, the rehabilitated Little League fields, splash pad area, a passeo area, a new multipurpose field. In our original Prop 68 competitive grant, we identified the multipurpose field on the north side. We would likely move forward, if the council moves forward this evening with the recommendation, cite the facility on the north side and ensure that the south side has that multi-use field. And then a number of other amenities. It was interesting that we did get contacted by the state asking if there was a connection or a nexus between the competitive grant application that we had outstanding along with the allocated grant, and we were able to provide them affirmation that there was a nexus, as well as kind of some context of why the grant applications moved forward the way that they did. Next steps after this evening, we'll get your recommended action this evening and then move forward to hiring a design team through an RFP process. We would anticipate that process to take most of 2022, moving into construction into 2023 with Day 1 operations meeting our grant timeline requirement of operations in 2024. So the staff recommendation for you this evening is to receive and file the update, approve Option 1, that's the completion of both the natatorium, gymnasium, all in one phase as the desired facility configuration, approve the north site as the desired facility site, authorize the release of the request for proposal for facility design, and then to direct staff to return with a modified budget recommendation to accommodate the entire project. And lastly, we'll leave you with something that's obviously not a design, but it's just a vision, and that is a future glimpse of what you may be approving this evening. Mayor and Council, I just want to end with a personal thanks to the entire team for their work. As I mentioned earlier, this has been something that we've been diligently doing weekly for the last three months, and that's represented in the recommendation. So thanks to the entire team and to our Dallin partners in the work that you have before you this evening. Conclude staff report. Happy to answer questions after public comment.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. I believe we have some people online as well as here in the room tonight, so if you have any questions about the projects, you'd like some clarification or give us some input, we'll give you the opportunity to speak. You have three minutes. Is there anyone here in the room liking to speak on this project? Yes, please come forward. State your name and area of residence, and we'll start the clock for you.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Cusack. I am the president of Trivelli Little League, and we are currently in our fall ball season, and we have about 200 kids. And we are using every bit of those three fields that you see highlighted on the screen. There's also another field that's not highlighted, it's Thompson Field, and we're using that, and we're using Miracle League. And we have really exceeded the facilities that we have. We use the Brem softball field over on what would be the new future multipurpose field. So I think just when you're considering your master plan, looking forward, we want to think about growth in our programs. Otherwise, we're going to be capping ourselves at what we're at right now with Little League. So we just keep that in mind, that we probably could use more fields and not less. That's all. And I support this, you know, new concept and new site. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the room? Great. We'll go ahead and go online. Those visiting us online, thank you for being at tonight's meeting.
We have Mike online who would like to comment.
Good evening, Mike.
Hi, how are you guys doing?
Wonderful.
Thank you for hosting this online thing. That's awesome. I just had a question. I remember in the last proposal, there was a skate park that you guys were proposing to remodel over the existing park. I'm wondering if there's going to be any sort of plan to include a skate park into this project, because it's, I believe it's just such a vital part to a community. And you guys had mentioned that you went to Colorado and saw a lot of their recreational facilities, and they have some of the best skate parks in the world. And I think it would be a really important thing to include a skate park in our community.
Very good. Thank you so very much. At the end, we'll get some staff comments on that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? All right. Thank you so much for joining us. Go ahead and chat and let us know if we missed you, and we'll make sure and get you on for any comments. This is an important project. All right, we'll bring it back to staff.
Council recollect and remember that we have a current second Prop 68 competitive grant application outstanding, and that is for the rehabilitation, basically the reconstruction of the existing skate park here at the community center. Again, we hope to hear back within the next four weeks or maybe even sooner on the success of that. Even if that grant application is not successful, I think that is a project that council has heard from a number of community members, and there may be other ways that the council might have options to move forward with something like that in the near future. It's definitely not something in the master plan for the Brem Park area, but it is on our radar for the community center for sure.
Wonderful. Thank you. And we see your thumbs up. Thank you. I know a lot of high school students are talking about how dated the skate park is now, and they use BMX bikes more than skateboards because it's a little bit steep in a lot of areas. So, yeah, I definitely think that that would be wonderful. And again, the Parker Recreation Department needs to decide, you know, what's the best locations for different activities and so forth, and I think we're going to get a lot of traffic to this center here. So it's good to make sure we include future projects like the skate park improvements. All right. If there are no other public comments, we'll bring it back to council members for comments. Councilmember Droods?
I have a question. Well, I pretty much support Option 1 as suggested, but the floodplain, the map, it's not very clear, like, where Brem 1 and Brem 2 are. Can we look at that map again and just kind of maybe point out where they are in the floodplain? I was looking at it, and it's a little confusing.
There you go. That was it.
There was another one. I thought there was another one up there.
Here we go.
Yeah, Gregor, you want to take that? Yeah. So if you look at, there's a little note just down on the left that indicates where the Boys and Girls Club is. I wish I had a laser pointer and I could kind of indicate it to you. It's tucked in below that blue line, so that is the median of your floodplain, and that is the existing Boys and Girls Club. It is completely within the floodplain, so the area south of that is actually the south side of the site, which is, again, completely in that floodplain. The north side is partially touched by that, we'll call it the nose that kind of sticks in right there. There's a portion of it that touches the north side of the site, and then the remainder of the site is actually extended beyond that, which is why, and Curtis, you might want to go to the two slides that show the massing. When you look at the massing of the two sites, the north site feels a lot lower to the ground, a lot more slender in how it's set up, and you oppose that to the south side of the site where we had to lift it up approximately, I believe it's 11 feet off the existing grade in order to bring the building out of the floodplain. When we contrast that to the north side of the site, we're lifting that area up approximately 18 inches. So it's a stark contrast when you look at the site development and the requirements of each of those sites in terms of the overall development to make that happen.
Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Labarta?
Thank you for your efforts in this, bringing some clarity. I was in favor of the Boys and Girls Club site at first, and having seen why Brem Park North is preferred, I understand, and I am in favor of your recommendations on making it Brem Site 1, which was the north area. And the development costs for the property will be a lot significantly reduced, and I do think that the raising of the facility by 11 feet would make it undesirable. I'm really interested in seeing something aesthetically pleasing, iconic, something that's going to be a Yucca Valley landmark into the future, a facility that's well appreciated and used and just enjoyed. And I think that what I'm seeing now, I'm feeling a lot more comfortable with this site selection than I was at first. So thank you very much for making that clear.
Mayor Proten?
Yeah, a couple of questions first and then a few comments. Parking, I'm not sure if I was asleep during that part or what, but do we have adequate parking to accommodate the facilities, or how many spaces are we talking about?
I do not have definitive number counts off the top of my head, but yes, we do. We have developed both sites, and again, Curtis, if you can go to the plans, you can see the expansion for like the north site. We are expanding the parking lot on that side and actually wrapping it around. and actually wrapping it around to the north and creating that connector, so you have a loop completely around back to the existing parking that's there. That's the, that's south. So, yeah, if you look at the plan there, we're expanding the existing parking that's there, you know, creating parking in front of the existing, the new facility proposed at that point, and then wrapping it around to the north side. It does a few different things, one, that parking lot will help create a buffer from the residential areas that are adjacent to it. It expands the parking, and as I understand from staff, when you have large events there, parking is at a premium, and even adding this much parking, they're assuming that it will all get used. So, this will help to support not only this rec center, but all other public events that you host on this site. And then again, it allows for access, you know, significantly fire access all the way around that site, and gives you access around the building as well.
Okay, thank you. And then, the restrooms, locker room facilities, those are shared between the gymnasium and the natatorium?
Yes, so the support facilities have been scaled, the primary driver of the scale of the locker rooms is for the natatorium itself. There's a requirement for numbers of toilet showers, and just those type of support functions. The gym has a lower support requirement, but at the same time, what we plan to do is share those facilities between the two. So we've scaled them for that day one operation such that you would be just adding the gym, so that there wouldn't be reconfiguration of those wet areas, because they are an expensive piece of construction.
Right, thank you. Okay, I'd like to really start by saying a public thank you to Assemblyman Mays for making it possible for us to even consider this. He was instrumental in getting us the $22 million for this project, and I, you know, I don't want that to get lost in the shuffle, that's something that would not have happened without his work, and so really appreciate that. And not just that, I mean, we say this is a once in a generation opportunity, but we've got another one coming with the fire station thing, so Assemblyman Mays. So I think, I think that's really to be noted, that we wouldn't even be talking about this if it wasn't for his work, so thank him for that. In the early stages of this, $22 million looked like a lot of money, and it was kind of fun when we could look at all the six or seven sites and brainstorm what might be, and, yeah, and then the fun kind of got less when we had to face the reality of constraints and budget constraints and site preparation constraints, and things like floodplains and so forth. So, I think the recommendation is good, and it makes sense, given what we've been through. The need, I like combining the projects, I think, you know, we've got a nearly 50-year-old pool over there at the high school that has served the community, and our access to it, the public's access to it has been very limited over the years to just, you know, eight or nine or 10 weeks in the summertime. And so, I think it's high time, I'm really glad this is looked at as a, an important project, and not just a nice-to-do in this community. I think it's extremely important to have that. And also, the gymnasium, we've used borrowed and rented gyms for many, many years, and so combining the projects makes sense. I fully support the option one of combining the two projects. Also like to, well, also on that note, phasing things just, you know, always, always makes me feel a little skeptical that the next phases will ever actually happen. So, I think combining them while we can is a good move. And to that end, I'd like to acknowledge town staff's work for working within a conservative budget all the years, all these years, so that we have the ability to consider combining the projects and supplementing the funding. That's, you guys have put us in a very good position to even be able to consider that, so thank you for that, and also for the very, very thorough research on putting this project together. So, thank you for that. As far as Ms. Cusack's comments about we need more fields, yep, but that's another project for another time, that's certainly noted, so thank you.
Councilmember Deston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you to staff and the crews for bringing this to this point. This is, as some of the other comments said, this is a big project, the biggest one that has happened in this community, and there was a lot of people externally that helped and internally, and the Dallin group, thank you very much for coming here and showing this and providing some clarity. You know, one of the things that we looked at was how far did that flood zone, it move, intrude into the project area? So moving that and considering the sustainability of the site was a very big marker and a change for some of my thoughts on it. I think the one that we got caught up in was looking at, and it was identified as having a public presence from the roadway, that the facility is there, and I know it will be a remarkable-looking building by all of the direction that I've seen so far, and we will just have to look at it from a different angle and make sure that that site presence is there too, and accessibility. I don't like the elevation change for the word of accessibility for everybody. I do like the design that was brought in, the zero entrance pool areas. I have a question in a minute about something else too on it that I wasn't quite clear on. But staff, and I think the presentation today, and the unpredictability of construction costs, material accessibility, and those kinds of things, phasing is not a good option for us right now. Those kinds of projects are not something we can look at today and clearly see what the cost is going to be for the community. If we have the ability right now to get it while things are pretty much sustainable as far as getting the product and getting the crews that are able to build the development, that seems like it's always a struggle lately in a lot of developments that I've seen, and whether it's residential or commercial. Those kinds of things have really gotten delayed a lot, and the overages on it have been extreme, and we would have to still start to look at maybe 10, 20, 30% increases in the budget if we decide to phase. And so I like the idea of bringing the whole project forward. Another one that was mentioned earlier was the, this is a neighborhood area, this is a site that is used by many people. The Little League field is used, the Miracle League is filled, the soccer field is packed all the time, so disruption in that area needs to be as narrow as possible while still making the goals of the project. So, for me, option one is a good presentation and something I could agree with. While looking at over for Dallin, the question was in the six lanes in the swim area, I didn't understand the depths, the shallow end was just over three feet, and I don't know much about swimming and training and what would be normal. Is that a normal depth on a low end of a pool?
Yes, we're looking at 3.6 as kind of the shallow end of the pool. If you look at the diagram that's up there, you have a zero entry in the, we'll call it the play pool, which is kind of the right-hand half of it outside of the lanes, and then that tapers down to about that same depth. So you've got kind of a gradual change in depth as it goes down to the 3.6, which allows you a straight transition over. One of the important things of that, and having those six lanes, is that that 3.6 actually carries down to approximately five feet about midspan of the pool. That allows you to capture a lot of different recreation activities, whether it's water aerobics, water walking, and just kind of different things, learn to swim where you want to have teachers who are standing up, teaching youth and et cetera, you know, the mommy and daddy and me and swim programs where parents are in the pool and, you know, want to be standing on a surface while the learn to swim is going on. So now what we've done is created a large area where you can do that, and you can actually utilize the rope system to create multiple zones or multiple classes simultaneously. And again, that was looking towards how can we capture the most revenue with this single facility, rather than having to build a whole second body of water and try and replicate it somewhere else. And it allows you, again, to consolidate staff, minimize your number of lifeguards, which directly impacts your overhead cost for operations, so that helps to keep that down. Then, when you look at the lanes, as that comes down, we'll taper that down, we've talked about between 7 foot and 8.6, depending upon where we want to end up at the end of the day for the deeper section of the pool. Again, that supports multiple different things, it allows you lifeguard training in that pool. You have to be at least seven feet deep to have certified lifeguard training, so we want to make sure we meet that. It also allows you racing starts, and with six lanes, you can actually have a competitive swim program. You can host competitive events, we can actually do time systems and things like that within this pool. So it really does expand that to a lot of different things. We talked about, you know, water obstacle courses. With those, when you do inflatables, you need a safety zone around them. With having six lanes, you'll be able to rope off a section, do that, and still have some space for recreational lap swim and things like that, and allow other activities to happen, rather than having a singular activity take over an entire pool.
Well, thank you. That was, actually, that was one of my other questions, was how do we zone and separate for activities, and you clearly stated that. So, thank you for looking at our checklist of some of the programming that we want to do and continue. We've had a long, it was mentioned a little bit earlier, our community has been dependent on relationships with other organizations to provide this kind of programming. The pool isn't actually ours while we maintain and carry a large piece of that and get benefit from it, it's the school districts. A gymnasium is the same thing, partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club, the high school, the college, all of those partners have been great in helping our community to have that programming. But now I think we are at the point in this community that we can bring a project like this forward because of our partners, Chad Mays, you know, and others that have brought forward this kind of springboard, and I think we have the option to continue to invest in this too, and bring the whole package together at one time in one phase. So, thank you for all your work.
Very good. So, am I, go ahead, yes, councilmember.
On the zero entrance pool area, does that allow for handicap access and alleviate the need for those lift-type devices?
So with every body of water, you need a minimum of two accessible entrances to the pool. That would be one of them. We'll usually have a paired stair area with handrails, that would be a second. I wouldn't suggest eliminating a lift because that actually makes sense to a certain extent. You can use a portable boom lift or other things like that, it's something that we'll study in greater detail. But just doing that, along with the stared area into the other water, you could easily achieve that secondary accessible entrance and meet the requirements of, you know, accessibility for this pool. The pool, because of the way it's designed right now, it's one body of water, so it's, because of the bulkhead and the opening, it's looked at as one body of water.
Okay.
So we would need two entrances in there, and it's just a matter of...
And they're going to look into that a little bit more about the lift and that, and where it would be placed if they place one?
Absolutely.
If we can avoid it.
Exactly. We'll study that with staff and make sure that we find, you know, work with the design team to find that optimal location.
Okay. And in this design, there is not a splash pad area, is that correct?
If you go back to the site, in the master plan, we, they'd actually identified an area away from the building itself, kind of central to the, kind of all of those amenities, you can see between the ballfields as a potential splash pad area. There's also areas around this new building that we could integrate splash pads. One of the discussions we had was whether or not that should happen inside a fence and be part of the natatorium, or should be part of, just part of the park area itself, and something that was accessible outside. So, it's not something that we've dialed out, we haven't identified it with this program, with this building. What we had done is actually created an outdoor area that could support the natatorium that wasn't part of the, that didn't include a splash pad component in it. But again, there are areas that we've looked at within the master plan of this park that could have that splash pad component.
Okay. The regulations on a splash pad require it to be fenced or not? Because it's a zero risk for drowning kind of thing?
The splash pads do not have standing water, and that's your requirement, is if you have standing water, you have to have it fenced, and you have to, or you have to have observation via lifeguards. Because a splash pad is on, off, it becomes wet concrete, and at that point, as you said, there is no drowning risk.
Okay. And, so we could still include that, do we need any of the facilities that are associated with the pool, like pool pump motors and chlorinators and whatever else they have in order to maintain or function a splash pad, splash pad area? And would that necessitate it being nearby, or those things could be piped to a distant location?
The splash pad itself would actually have its own set of pumps, motors, UV filter, things like that. So regardless of where it's located, we would have to either carve out space, we'd have to create the space for that equipment.
So, even if it was sitting in next to the natatorium, it would have its own supply?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great question. So, am I correct in getting the feeling that the council's pretty much agreeable about not trying to phase the project and trying to do it all in one particular project? And is everyone agreeable that the north park site's probably going to be the one to help get this project moving forward? All right, so we have agreement on that. It talks about us releasing the request for proposals for facility design and so forth. Can you tell me a little bit more about that before?
Yeah, I was just thinking about that, Mayor, so thank you for that. Dallin, you want to take that, kind of walk through what that looks like and what we hope to achieve through that process?
Certainly. So, the next step in the process for moving the project forward would be to put out an RFP to hire a design team to complete the project design. It's a multi-step approach, first step, of course, is to hire that design team. Once the design team's on board, they will be doing a series of designs. Basically, what we've crafted for you is a fixed program that's completely vetted. It saves them the time of trying to figure out those program components. They'll be able to start right away into taking these components and let, you know, they understand the site, they understand the location, they understand the needs, all of the space, the space constraints, the desires that you have as a town for what you're trying to achieve with this project. It kind of streamlines their design process and allows them to go straight into design and really craft, you know, create that iconic facility that you're looking for. There's a series of steps through that process. One would be initial design, which should come back to town council for review and approval. And then beyond that, going into construction documents, that team will put together the set of technical documents that would become the basis of bid for a general contractor to come on board. We would assume at that point that there will be a request for approval to go out to bid. Once the bids are back, a request to accept a bid, assuming that we have a qualified low bid, and we are ready to go with that, and we've vetted that process, and then, you know, going into construction for completion of the project. So, this is kind of that first step in getting us to, through the technical documents portion to get you closer to construction.
One of the benefits of going through what we've done in the last 90 days or so, though, is I think, even though we had a conceptual idea of what the facility might look like, I think as we are at the point today, it's much more clarified. So not only in terms of location, but generally in terms of, all right, this thing's going to be about 38,000 square feet, the pool's going to be about 5,600 square feet, the natatorium about 12,000 square feet, and about a 10,000 square foot gym, so that when that RFP for design goes out, people know what they're actually, what the client, what we want. And so it becomes much more, hopefully, at the end of the day, a much more apples-to-apples comparison with what now can you bring, that's a general concept, what can you bring, what creativity can you bring to the project?
And then what would your company's role be with the design team or the series of designs? Is it more cost analysis once they're done, or do you give them input from what you've learned from us?
Yeah, so as the project manager for the project, we will be helping you to oversee that design process. We have input, we'll make sure that the staff's communications are clear and back to the consultant as they're doing their work. Our responsibility is to oversee what they do, make sure that they've integrated the requests that have been made by the town, by the council, that they're faithfully executing the contract that they've signed with you, that they're providing all their deliverables and doing everything that they need to do, and as the, providing technical oversight as well, to make sure, we're going to provide peer review, to make sure that what they're doing meets the needs and the requirements of the project, making sure that they're dotting all their i's and crossing all their t's, and doing everything that they need to do as a consultant, so that at the end of the day, the bid process, especially, you know, especially the... especially, you know, especially the bid in the construction process, the bids are, again, apples to apples. We're getting good numbers, you know, the better the documents are, the more clear, the more concise they are, the better numbers you're going to get coming, coming back. And then, you know, through construction, hopefully that minimizes change orders and things like that. But we're in there throughout that process to make sure that these things are happening for you.
And then just taking it one step back to, we'll be a valuable part of working with the town team to select this design team. We're really anticipating big competition for this project. This will be really exciting. And so we're working with the team to qualify those responses, vet through them. It will be a pretty quick one-month response period. We'll be conducting the interviews with the team and as Curtis said, really be able to see what their creativity is to get us started on the right track.
And Stephanie just whispered in my ear, don't forget cost analysis. Yes, that is a big part of what we're doing too, is vetting the cost as you go. Cost is a process in, in the design and we're always checking that. It's always something that you look at. You don't design and hope for a final solution. You're always vetting and making sure that you're working towards that targeted goal.
Thank you for whispering in his ear because that's exactly one of the reasons we wanted to hire you and we're paying the, the fees that we are is we, we want to make sure we get a good bang for our buck. And if we can do some design elements to give us facilities that are going to be beneficial and fantastic, that would be great. You know, little things like this, you know, I know there's always going to be change orders, but we try to keep those to a minimum as you know, because it's expensive. But I just don't want us to get too far down the line and then look at some things and think, wow, this is not exactly what we're sort of hoping for. You know, for example, you know, we do have that location and of course, the grass fields and the view off the west is beautiful. So we want to take advantage of that view, you know, going that direction. We actually have grass to look at here in Yucca Valley and we have it on display outside of our aquatic center. But also, you know, things like that, I noticed there were some assumptions when you're doing the design and I don't do this work for a living, but I noticed that the size of the, the women's locker room and bathroom facilities are exact same size as the men's. And I didn't know if that's really, it, they really should be the same size or should the women's portions be a little bit larger? The other thing I noticed that anytime I've been in a pool and a lot of times through the years, I notice how many women are taking kids and rushing them into the locker room bathroom. And I saw, saw in that design that that bathroom was away from the pool and the men's bathrooms were, and locker rooms were closer to the pool. So I'd say, I'd want the flip-flop. I want the women's bathrooms to be closer to the pool because a lot of times it's, it's, you know, women are there with their children or whatever and men have their children there too. But I've seen a lot more emergencies with getting kids to the bathroom and, and dealing with multiple children and having it conveniently located to the pool would be an advantage for the women's locker room. And then, you know, I also thought, you know, like we were talking about, we got to look at the old, overall view. And if we can save the T-ball fields and we can save the Little League fields like what we have and improve those and not disturb them, then I think, like you said, having that construction off to the side. One thing I didn't notice on here is, you know, is the Boys and Girls Club improvements and things like that. Is that a different discussion, a different project, different amount of money? And also I saw the beautiful overlay of the entire park with splash pads and walking trails and, and green trees. And I'm wondering, what's that price tag? So when we get to the point of funding, I want to remind the council, we have other large future projects coming up, including finishing the whole facility, making it look like what we see on the maps, having this community center and bringing our staff all under one roof and, and revamping this community center right here is going to be another large project. So you, we get to the next part, which is funding. And does it make sense that we consider some type of a bond issue, a bond to make sure we get the funds we need for this project so it doesn't impact what we want to do with the rest of the park, what we want to do with the town hall? So can you, we address that funding and possibility of what a bond would look like?
Sure, we're not going to do that this evening, but I do have a couple of comments for you. So we'll go back to this slide here, kind of the, the master plan site. If by chance we're successful in the Prop 68 competitive grant, these amenities become much more deliverable so that closing off of Little League Drive, the Paseo, some of the improvements to Tri-Valley, all of that, you'll remember that that price tag on the competitive grant I think is 8.2 million for those types of improvements. And so that is a significant amount. There are other sources that we're already using for that master plan vision. So for example, the council recently took action on establishing the underground district for utilities there for Edison along Palm and Little League. We have a federally funded sidewalk improvement project there on Little League as well that we'll be able to dovetail in. If Prop 68 competitive grant is not available, that's roughly about 8.2 million of amenities here that are going to need to be funded elsewhere. So to answer your broader question, Mayor, on other, other needs that the community has, I'd say there's at least three or four projects right now that are in the pipeline that are all relatively big-ticket items, this being one of them. The other one being your town hall consolidation, senior center modernization, your midtown kind of plaza, North Park, a number of other projects that we're, we're moving forward at the same time with. So that's at the, on the work list of staff and Rachel and I'll be working on developing what that looks like. Again, I'd go back to this slide and just really commending not only the current council but prior councils as well on, on their fiscal conservatism and allowing you the option now to be able to move many of these things forward. So there's often a time to save and we've done that for the last 15 years. And then there are times where you're able to take advantage and leverage projects and that's where you're at today and you have those resources to do that. So whether that's your existing funds, debt service, or some mix of all of that, we would bring that to you and, and let you take a look at that, knowing that it's not singular projects that we're looking at, but kind of comprehensively what that model looks like.
Sounds good, sounds good. One other thing on the design aspect, I've been in small gymnasiums before where, you know, it's set up for recreation and parks and rec. And it, it's, its size is, is fine for a game, but it has no size, as you can go to the Boys and Girls Club and remember, for anybody to sit on the sideline. So parents and spectators have no, you know, you walk in the gym and you're almost on the court already. So I, again, I don't know the design and the, and the elements on that, but again, that would be a design element. We don't need permanent bleachers, but we need room for spectators and, and the like. The future games, kids coming up to the next game and so forth. Go ahead.
I have a question on design. In, in a locker room that's attached to a pool, is there outside access or do you worry about that being access serenipus in, in a, in a non-controlled way into the pool? So what I've been thinking is the bathroom facilities on a large sports field, since we're building this whole new facility, will it have access for the other, like the soccer players? Can they come in and use the restrooms easily or do they have to go through the pool stuff to get to the restrooms and locker room?
It, it is specifically controlled and you want to do that because you want to be able to control your gate, control the people that are coming and going within the, within the facility itself.
Okay.
And the way this is set up, everybody comes in through the main lobby and that's where your control point will be.
Okay.
So the short answer is no. The soccer players can't come in and use the bathroom.
Okay.
Not without going through the lobby first.
Do we have enough restrooms and that sort of stuff for the soccer facilities, the way they are in the ball fields?
Yeah, it hasn't been.
Especially when we're filling out.
Sue, I don't know if you've heard otherwise, but it hasn't been something that's been brought up to us as a significant issue today.
Very good.
And then just broadly speaking, just so you're aware, at this point, again, the focus has been on kind of overall programming and how does the facility meet those programming objectives? We have not spent any time on amenity design. That's all in your next phase and we appreciate those comments, Mayor. And absolutely we'll jot those down, make sure they're, along with many of the other ideas that we may have.
One other question. Right now there's real favorable bond rates. Am I correct on that? I mean, money is relative, if it's available, which I assume it would be to the municipality.
It's still a good environment, absolutely.
It's very cheap. And so that might be something we should look into more so that we don't, well, I'm sure it will be observed. You'll go through it.
All right. Thank you. Did you have any other input or questions from your staff? Okay. Again, anyone online that was wanting to ask a question that joined us late? No? No one joined us late? Okay, very good. So I'm looking for motion, any other discussion? If not, we're looking to receive and file this Prop 68 aquatics recreation program update, approve the option one, including both the phase one and two to be done together, approve the Brem North site, authorize the release of the request for proposal facility design and direct staff to bring us back some recommendations on budgeting.
I'll make that motion as recommended, option one.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll do our roll call.
Councilmembers Dennison?
Yes.
Droz?
Yes.
Lombardo?
Yes.
Schooler?
Yes.
And Mayor Abel?
Yes. Well, thank you again for taking the time to come up, visit the High Desert and be with us tonight. We appreciate that. We're really excited. As you said, I hope the people who are bidding on the project, like you said, are as excited as we are. And, and as you've heard, we really want to make this a very nice place for many generations to come. At this time, well, town council takes its time to consider comments or items not on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak? You will have three minutes to speak on any item that's not on the agenda tonight. Yes?
I just wanted to take this time to again, just reiterate on behalf of Tri-Valley Little League, I want to thank the town for their partnership. Really we were able to have a nice spring season right, coming out of COVID. The fields look great. Thank you to Rusty and his staff. We had 337 kids this spring. A normal season before COVID was 360, so we came up to capacity pretty quick. And at fall ball, we're doing our first fall ball season ever with Little League that I can remember and nobody else that I talked to can remember us ever doing it. We're at 200 kids. So that's 10 kids a team, that's, that's 20 teams. It's really quite fantastic. We have four junior, senior baseball teams. We have two divisions and four junior, senior softball teams playing. And then two major teams, two minor teams in softball and two in every division, T-ball. And some of them are stacked at 15 players per team. So it's really quite exciting and we probably could have taken more. So the baseball's really popular, softball's very popular and we're just excited for your support because these kids are having fun right now. They're out there tonight. It's first night of games for some of them and it's really exciting. So stop by and please see us.
Thank you.
Yeah, great news.
Anyone else? Well, I'd like to thank, we'll bring it back to staff, but I'd like to thank the staff members I saw today at the pool at Yucca Valley High School. They were up to their elbows, literally in grease and dirt, working on that old pump and the equipment. And I'm like, I bet you guys are going to be so glad to get out of this place eventually. And they said, just give me the word and we're out of here. So just warn the school district when, when this pool is done that we'll be able to give them back our wonderful pool equipment and, and all the work we've done and they can inherit it back.
Mayor, just one additional comment. Thought you'd get a kick out of this. We did want to reach out to the Assemblyman and let him know that you folks were talking about this evening. So just let him know that council is giving final direction tonight on both the gym and the indoor pool at about a roughly $30 million price tag. His response was very short, as you would expect. It was, oh yeah, good work. I'm literally going to cry when that thing gets built. So he's looking forward to it as well, so.
If there are no other comments, we'll go ahead and call this meeting over and thank you again for attending online and in person.